Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, 2025. The first order of business is the approval of our January 22nd meeting minutes. Any additions, corrections, or changes?
I immediately accept the minutes.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, we'll now be hearing petitions open to public comment. Petitioners or their representatives will be given 10 minutes to present their petition. Subsequent individual citizens wishing to speak will be allowed a maximum of three minutes, and representatives of an opposition group will be allowed a maximum of 10 minutes. At the end of the public hearing, there will be an allowance for three minutes for rebuttals. All right, our next order of business is the public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend and reenact the city of Lynchburg's floodplain area to include multiple changes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So for this portion of the agenda, this is actually a staff-initiated ordinance update. So with us, we have Erin Hawkins, our floodplain manager with the Department of Water Resources.
Hi, good afternoon. As Rachel mentioned, this is a city-initiated, a stizzy staff-initiated update to the ordinance, and it was done in conjunction with the Department of Community Development, Water Resources, Economic Development, and the city attorney's office as well. And we have done a lot of background work on this. We've worked with the law firm Sands Anderson, who was very well-versed in this type of ordinance and legal requirements of, and helped to restructure the ordinance. And it has gone through the appropriate reviews at both the Department of Conservation and Recreation, and through the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association, review process. So all of that had to been done before we came before you today. All that to say is that it's into ensure that it is compliant with National Flood Insurance Program requirements. So that was really kind of my overview. So I'll just kind of jump into the background. The city has had floodplain mapping for a number of years. The first adopted ones were in 1975. Across the state and really across the nation, there hasn't been substantial updates to floodplain mapping for many, many years. In 2008, we did have a partial update for the, what you can kind of see on the screen on the right-hand side is Rock Castle Creek. And then the next stream to it, kind of in the middle of the image, is what's known as Burton Creek. So those two together make up the Burton Creek watershed within the southern portion of the city. There was a remodel done of that section, and so that was the intent of the 2008 update that we had. And at that time, we did a similar process of what we're doing now with the administrative items. With this that we're bringing before you today, there is no mapping change. So we are not changing any physical boundary of any of the floodplain mapping at the city. As you'll see, there is a note, the third bullet, is that there are pending map changes that FEMA has initiated. They've recognized that many floodplains are, the mapping is long overdue, 40 years plus, in many situations, including ours, and so they are initiating a mapping update. We will have more information that will come later in 2025 back before you, but that process has not officially started yet. At least on the public side of it, FEMA has not, to my knowledge, published their public notification of that intended mapping update. So as that occurs, we'll have more information for you in the future. The link that you'll have, if you have this electronically, that is a hyperlink to our online mapping system. It's just there for information purposes if you choose to use it there. What we have before you today, while there are a lot of references that are being amended, I will say that, and this is not too overly simplistic to say, is that it does not change business as usual as it pertains to development of the floodplain in the city of Lynchburg. A lot of the changes in here are administrative changes to make sure that we are in alignment with the minimum requirements of the model ordinance. And what that means is that FEMA, along with DCR, they put forth a model ordinance to say, these are the minimum requirements to have in there. That's what we have done in this regard. So the majority of the requirements in there are the changes in here for those amendments are mostly administrative in nature. I will bring your attention to bullet items number two and three. These are what you may consider more substantive changes to the ordinance. Number two, this is a conversation that city staff has had, and what this does is that it, one, is in alignment with the model ordinance, so we'll start with that. But second, what we wanted to have here is that it allows for the underlying zoning uses to occur at existing structure that may be located in a floodway. For instance, if you have a structure that was pre-existing, but it's designated in a floodway, by the current code, it is drastically restricted to what the use could be, to a Marina Wharf up here, something that, you know, we're not necessarily going to have here in the city of Lynchburg or on the bank of the James. However, what that did preclude, any of those existing structures, was being rehabbed or redeveloped. Adaptive reuse, thank you. I knew there was a word I was looking for there. But the adaptive reuse of those buildings. What this change does is allow the underlying zoning uses to occur for that structure. It doesn't allow the structure to be expanded, and it doesn't allow any new construction to be added to the parcel. It is just the adaptive reuse of the existing structure. So that is what you could call a change in the requirement, I guess, in the sense more favorable for the redevelopment of that. The third bullet item is a recommendation that staff put forward, and what I'll do is skip forward here to, can you back that?
I think it was scrolled.
Will it? Okay, there we go. So freeboard. What I'll start off with, freeboard is an area above a water surface elevation. So if you have a water surface elevation that comes to the top of this podium here, the freeboard is an area above it. So if a water surface elevation is, say, a hun, you know, 100 feet, that's more realistic, right? So 10 feet, it would be an additional 12 inches above it would be the freeboard requirement. Then you could have a finished floor elevation above it. What staff is recommending is that 12 inches be increased to 18 inches. What that does is provide for an added layer of protection for that structure, and this would be for any new or redeveloped structure in the city of Lynchburg. And what that would be specifically for residential structures, new structures, or substantially improved structures, it would mean that that finished floor elevation would have to be 18 inches rather than 12 inches above. It further protects the structure from any floodwaters that could encroach to the structure. From a commercial standpoint, and if you can see on the image on the right, this is meant to depict some of the interior, more building-related items there, electrical, plumbing, your HVAC. It's talking about floodproofing or elevating those components of a structure to, again, protect them from floodwater should they try to get into the structure. And again, that freeboard goes to that same elevation, so to the, from 12 inches to 18 inches, it would be floodproofing or protected for that structure. This is also in alignment with what the recommendation is from both DCR and FEMA. The minimum requirement by law is 12 inches. Again, city staff recommendation is to have 18 inches there. And in the future, this is not necessarily intended for today's conversation, but in the future, the city has considered joining what is called the Community Rating System, or CRS program with FEMA. And what that does, it is, I don't want to call it a recognition program, but it kind of is in the sense of when we say we do X, Y, and Z, a minimum requirement, what that does, if you're in the community rating system, it offers your policyholders a rate reduction because the community is already doing, you know, what they're supposed to, and then some for being able to protect the properties within the community. That is something for a future date. It's another conversation for another time. But also having a freeboard requirement at 18 inches is more favorable. It gives you more points going into that program than it is at 12 inches. And then the only other item that I had on here is a definition of substantial improvement. We all know what new construction is, new permitting and everything for, whether it's a residential or non-residential. Substantial improvement is when there's improvements to a structure that's greater than 50% of the market value. That is a federal definition. It's a requirement of the ordinance to have. And what that does, it kind of sets the trigger for if a existing structure would have to be brought up to code. So if they were previously at 12 inches, they would then have to come up to 18 inches. So that would be the only time that the substantial improvement would trigger a retrofit to some previously existing. But primarily, this is moving forward for new construction, new development in the community. And that concludes the presentation at this time. I'll be happy to have any further questions you have in terms of the ordinance update. But moving forward, we have here a will-come-before-city-council-at-the-work session on February 25th, and is scheduled for a public hearing on March 11th. Thank you.
Rachel, do we open this for public comment?
Right, because it is considered a change to our zoning ordinance, yes.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in favor of this new ordination, ordinance? Please come forward and state your name and sign on the form there. Thank you.
You do state my name. Amy Syke, AccuPoint Surveying and Design, frequent flyer here at Planning Commission. We have actually worked with staff on several projects in the downtown area and looking at future projects, and I would like to publicly thank the staff for trying to help us in some of the redevelopment. We have members of Planning Commission who have businesses in the Lower Basin, and this has been, I mean, I think, a catalyst to all of downtown to help redevelopment. So in clarifying some of these and helping to foster more growth and redevelopment in the area, again, as Erin mentioned, there are loads and loads of criteria that I wouldn't bore you with on the engineering side, but there are plenty of protections that are put in place by FEMA and other insurance requirements for substantial improvement and things in place to protect from an insurance side as well. Public safety clearly is always first and foremost, but at the same time, we don't want to prevent business owners and potential redevelopment for an area that's gone through so much. So this change in the ordinance will help us moving forward to maybe get some things that would have otherwise just become dilapidated and just ultimately have to be torn down to be rehabbed and, you know, then provide a tax base. So I think this will open up a lot of avenues in a safe way, and if you've lived in Lynchburg for any length of time, you know, flash flooding is not something that just happens. We have monitoring upstream, and so any type of elevated rise in the James River in this area is known in advance. It's not just, you know, in 10 minutes, we're all going to be, you know, inundated. So we have protections from that method, too. So I think it's a great change and opens up a lot of opportunity. So, thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anybody speaking opposition of the ordinance update?
Good afternoon. My name is Doyle Allen. I'm a land surveyor by profession, retired, of course. But we get requests basically from homeowners to do blomas. That's a letter, a map, amendment. And my concern is the freeboard area. If you increase that, my understanding is the federal requirement is 12 inches. If you go above that, then how is someone to know that? I know that they can read the ordinance, your ordinance, but if your ordinance differs from the national standard, we wouldn't normally do that. When I go into an area, I go in Toronto, for instance, if I get a request there, I would look at the national standard, and that's what I would go by. So I'm basically in support of the ordinance, but the increase from 12 inches to 18 inches, if I understand it correctly, I would be opposed to that. Thank you.
Would you please write your name down on that paper also? Anybody else here to speak in opposition? I think I'd like to call the, call you back up and address that, as well as address any questions we might have before we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, the question about the awareness, you know, the notification, can you give any clarity on that?
Well, in terms of someone doing any improvements to their structures, generally you come before your local governing, you know, department, community development, working with your development folks, working with, you know, folks like myself and other communities. And so when we start that permitting process, it is part of the plan review process. And so generally speaking, for any new development or any work done in that nature, the local ordinance is over the, this is a higher standard than what the federal is, so, but it is the local requirement that sets what the bar is for that community. So that would be the first place to check when you're going in and doing that kind of work. So if someone's coming in and wanting to do an improvement, we would have to, you know, go by the ordinance and do that. Now, there was a public notice that was sent out to all property owners in the city, so if you had any portion of your property touching the floodplain, you did get a notice of that in the mail, and that notice did talk about what those changes are. And I've had about, you know, two dozen or so phone calls, at least, that I personally have talked to over the past couple of weeks since the letter has gone out, mostly just kind of understanding what the basic requirement is. Now, that's not to say that when we go through plan review, that that information would then be shared with that, that property owner or developer, in the sense that if they were going to be building in the floodplain, if it was something that was allowed, then they would be apprised of this requirement and would be caught very early on in the development process, in the plan development stage of the process.
Just as a clarification point, if I was making an improvement, a substantial improvement, would everything have to go to that 18 inches of freeboard?
Not necessarily, no, sir. I can scroll back. You can see here in this middle image, you can see the living area here, that is the area that is above. So if you imagine this kind of little gray line here is that freeboard, that is your protected space, your lowest adjacent grade. But you can see here that the garage next to it is at a lower elevation. So it doesn't necessarily have to be the entire structure, but it is the livable space. So if you were to have a structure in the floodplain, you would not have habitable space below that water surface elevation for protection of life, and then it would really just apply then to the living. So in every building is unique in that sense, so every individual building would have to be looked at as to what the requirement would then pertain to.
And I should have mentioned, the public hearing was closed after the last comment, so now we're just open for questions from the.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So it looks like no map changes are needed, mostly administrative at this point. That being said, the map changes haven't been made as yet because they haven't been made yet. I mean, raising a six inches in this city is going to make, it is going to make some difference. There's a lot of.
It will make some difference. So the map changes that are coming, I have seen the preliminary maps. There are some areas that are going to be significantly higher than they have been in the past. We have, we have those maps, and we plan on, as soon as FEMA puts the public notice out to intend for the map adoption, we're going to have that information publicly available on our GIS page, very similar to the QR code that was included in the public notice letter. And that online link will have something very similar that we can then send out to all property owners. And then, so that will be whether you currently touch it or, you know, are new. So anyone that touches the existing or the new floodplain will also receive that letter in the future. But there are areas in the city that we are going to see an increase. It varies. I'm not going to sit here and say it changes by this much across the city, but in certain areas, it does, we are going to see some substantial changes.
Just got a couple of things, too, just on the side. It looks like the city worked with, it's like a collaboration with the Floodplain Management Division, Department of Conservation, Recreation, and FEMA. Is this, I know sometimes HUD actually has a two-foot freeboard regulation in some places. Is this, is this collaboration, is this six inches going to, being done to bring us in conformity with expectations of FEMA, or is it just being done because we need to update the city? Why are we doing this?
It is, after reviewing the ordinance and after speaking with our DCR representatives, it is the recommendation that community is adopt a higher standard for the freeboard requirement. And so after staff consider that, we had that internal conversation of, you know, what does this mean? We decided that the increased added protection essentially, that this six inches could provide a structure, was meaningful enough to move it forward as a recommendation to have it included. No, go ahead.
Is this going to affect, I mean, do we know how, I mean, I saw the document, over 100, and then I saw another reference to over 1,600 properties. Do we know specifically how many properties are going to be affected by this?
Specifically, it is, oh, gosh, that's the one number I didn't.
That's okay.
Commit to memory. It is about 1,600. Some of those multiple property owners, our mailing list was probably, it was maybe around 1,100, taking into account multiple property owners have properties in there, but it's about 1,600 properties. And they're generally around and along the areas of, you know, these highlighted areas. So the blue that you see on the screen is what's considered the floodplain area, and then the hatched area that you can see in some of these areas is the floodway. That is where the underlying use will affect only that area there.
So this is an ordinance, will this affect, not to hog everybody's time here, will this affect, one, is this going to put some properties out of code, and two, is this going to have some kind of negative detrimental effect on their homeowner's insurance because they're suddenly now going to be considered in the.
It should not have a negative impact on their homeowner's insurance. Usually when, when you're looking at whether a structure is pre-existing or not, so it is, at the time that that structure was developed, that was the code of requirements at the time. So I don't want to call it non-conforming or out of compliance, but, you know, there will be a time where, or with, if we do adopt a higher freeboard, we'll have some structures that, based on when they were developed, they're going to have the 12-inch. But the newer ones moving forward, they would have the 12-inch. It doesn't put them out of compliance, it just means they were built at a different time.
The grandfathered in, and then we'd have a, some kind of caveat that they can't be rebuilt, as is, should they be destroyed.
If a, if an existing structure in the floodplain were demolished for some reason and rebuilt, they would have to meet the new code requirement.
I was just going to say, I think it's important to recognize that not all 1,100 properties have a structure in the floodplain, it's just those properties have floodplain on the parcel. So it's not that.
Yeah.
We're talking about 1,100 buildings in a floodplain. That's not it.
Yes, because many of the property owners that received this, probably more than half of them that received this letter, it's just because their property touches, touches the floodplain at that point. It is not that every single one of those letters had a structure in the floodplain. No, sir. no, sir.
Curiously, on the personal property insurance side of things, can you see or foresee, do you have any insights as to any impact on that side of the equation, specifically for, you know, someone who might be downtown in the floodplain? While the building is grandfathered in, per se, insurance companies are looking at the level that the personal property sits within the floodplain?
How will that help redevelopment? In other words, it seems like it would be detrimental to redevelopment. So personally, I'm missing some key in here.
I don't know that it would necessarily be detrimental because this is already a requirement. So coming up to the 12 inches above the free board, that's already a requirement for redevelopment. So if a structure that's downtown, a business such as yourself, if it were to be redeveloped or built, it would have to then be built to that free board requirement currently.
Let's try this. I think the ordinance sits in place. I think your issue has to do with where FEMA draws the new maps. And I think that's unfortunate, I think that's outside the purview, or your purview, but I think that's where the issue is going to come.
Yeah.
That's the missing link right there.
And regardless of whether we're under the current mapping that we have or a future mapping, for new development or this substantial improvement, these would be triggered now. You know, if they were, if a new, if a structure was having substantial improvement and they were not at that 12 inches, then they would have to, you know, elevate to that 12 inches. In my tenure here, that's never had to have been enacted in the city, at least to my But moving forward, it would protect any of the new development that were to come in.
I guess I'm just worried about the hypothetical, where a building like, yeah, so I think you kind of know.
And I don't, I can't sit here because I am not a real estate agent and I'm not an insurance agent, so I don't know that I can necessarily say that, no, this will never have an impact to it. But that's where, what I can say is that having this higher standard, especially if the city opts into joining the CRS program at a future date, it would actually be beneficial for rate holders in the community because the brief synopsis of the CRS program is that you have different tiers. Nine is the lowest coming in and one is the very top. There's only one community in the entire United States, and it's in California, that is a level one. We estimate that you could, we could come in probably at a nine or an eight level. For every level, you have about, it's a 5% premium reduction for the policy holder within that community. So having a higher standard and looking at these things, again, this is for a future date, that doesn't add any other level of requirement joining the CRS program, it's just documenting what we already do, and there's a fair amount of outreach associated with that as well. It's really ultimately long-term in the best interest of the policyholders, our customers, our citizens in the community, because we have adopted a higher standard. And that is a, that is a conversation that we want to bring forth at a later date, particularly once we've looked at the new mapping and see where, you know, where staff feels like we can come in at on that program.
Yeah, I just think for the record, the property owner, I can see how that would benefit them, but for the, the leasing, I could see how that could potentially greatly hurt them. Not the benefits of the one through nine, but I'm just saying in terms of how the insurance would put the lens on the requirement, the personal property insurance.
I just wish I was an insurance agent and could help you with that question a little bit more, and I'm not.
Yeah, it really is, yeah.
Because FEMA is going to, FEMA is going to expand the area, it's going to be a special hazard area, and it's going to be more costly to rebuild. I mean, so you know it's going to, it's going to have an impact. I guess my issue with that is, because I completely, I mean, that was the first thing I thought of when I saw it, because I'm cynical, but the, but the reality is, the thing that gives me some hope is the idea of a CRS program, which to me is the only thing I've heard of that gives us any options to deal with what's essentially going to be done to us, perhaps not for us, so.
And you're exactly right, that at least affords some relief to the property owners, the policyholders that have flood insurance. And there's many property owners in the city that do not have flood insurance on their properties that are in there, so.
We've got a lot of water, I mean, I appreciate, you know, what you're talking about, but there's, you know, there's a lot of water in Lynchburg that's going to be impacted by this.
And I do feel comfortable saying in this sense, and I don't know that this answers your question or addresses your concern, but if you're in a special flood hazard area, you're in the floodplain, whether you have that six inches or not, you're still going to have a level of flood insurance that you're going to have to have at the policy. I don't know that that six inches is going to make much of a difference on the flood insurance policy that you're going to have to hold to protect your property. And again, city staff has looked down the road to see, you know, as we further see impacts and the impacts that we have seen over the, you know, past 10 years, even the past handful of years of flash flooding that has occurred in our community and riverine flooding that has occurred as well, you know, it does afford that added protection to a property owner.
That's a good point. I would say that, just as a side, this is not being driven by FEMA though, is that correct?
No, sir, this is a staff recommendation to move forward. I'll be frank, we can keep it at 12 inches and move forward, business as usual. Again, staff felt strongly enough to bring before you today and have just this conversation and understanding what that difference of 18 inches could mean now and for future mapping that we could have in the, you know, that's forthcoming, that that's what we wanted to bring forth to y'all today.
Well, this, thinking what this gentleman asked a little bit ago, about when someone comes in to survey a property, they're looking at the federal guidelines, is that standard practice? If it is, and what he's saying, I think, if I understand correctly, is that?
Not right now.
Is that a surveyor?
Traditionally, yes.
Is that a surveyor wouldn't have something readily available? I mean, I assume they're building the local codes as well. Is this going to be incorporated into a standard building code?
So when, when any development project comes forth, we rely on the city code to set the standard. So, and that's where the conversations will start, you know, at the time a building permit is submitted or a site plan is submitted for, for plan review, and we will talk about these items in moving forward. In the instance that you're doing a LOMA for a citizen coming in, it would be prudent to follow the local ordinances before you go to the federal requirements. The federal requirements are again the minimum, and it does not preclude a local government from adopting a higher standard. So it should be the practice to look at your local ordinances first and to deem whether or not what the standard is.
Which is a federal standard, significantly higher. Any other comments?
Just one quick thing. You had made the comment early on that part of what this ordinance does, I think is what I heard, this frees up possible uses for properties that might currently be in the floodplain.
Floodway.
Floodway.
There are only approximately, I do have this number, 16 structures that are located in the floodway that would be eligible to, you know, looking at the zoning, the underlying zoning. And again, the floodplain requirements are more restrictive, so if it's not allowed by the floodplain ordinance, it can't be allowed by the zoning, even if it's an allowable use. So it's, you start with the floodplain, and as long as it's not prohibited there, the underlying zoning may be allowed at that parcel. And again, in the current, there's only a handful of them, about 16 in the city.
But that really only talks about existing structures. That does not talk about property that, for whatever reason, has been undeveloped.
Right. And for the record too, our ordinance in no way, shape, or form will allow new development of residential or non-residential uses in the city. So it would only be pre-existing structures that happen to be in the floodway that would be eligible for this. There is no new construction allowed.
I think that's a much better answer than my question. Thank you.
Well, any motion out there for this? Move for to city council?
I move to accept the new floodplain ordinance as proposed.
Okay, any other comments before we vote? Okay, all in favor to move this to city council, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, passes four to one, and thank you. All right. We'll now move to the public hearing on the petition of JAM 89 LLC and Langley Land LLC to amend the future land use map from low-density residential and medium-density residential to high-density residential and to rezone approximately 53 and 33 hundredths of an acre located at 815, 825, 832, 833, 903, 903A, and 906 Wiggington Road from I-3 heavy industrial, R2 low-medium density residential, and R3C medium-density residential conditional to R4C high-density residential with conditions to allow the construction of 750 total residential units consisting of condominiums, patio homes, and townhomes. So Rachel, if you want to present this?
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of Planning Commission. As stated, the purpose of this petition is to amend our future land use map and to rezone approximately 53 acres to allow 750 residential units. The subject properties were annexed into the city in 1976. The properties are currently zoned R2 low-medium density residential, I-3 heavy industrial, and R3C medium-density residential district conditional, as shown on the map here, with the R3C portion being the majority of the property. The resource conservation district, which is shown in green, is located along Ivy Creek and is not considered part of this petition. The future land use map recommends low and medium-density residential uses for the properties. Low-density residential are dominated by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four dwelling units per acre. Medium-density residential are typically smaller lots, single-family detached housing, duplexes, and townhomes at densities of up to 12 units per acre. The petition proposes to amend the flume, or future land use map, to high-density residential. These areas generally consist of higher-density townhome or multifamily housing with ranges, with densities ranging up to 38 units per acre, sorry, 30, not 38. They may also include public institutional and private recreation and private open spaces. Limited retail and service uses are also possible in mixed-use developments within high-density residential projects. The properties consist of mainly undeveloped land with a few small residential structures. They're bound to the north across Wiggington Road by a mix of single-family residential, a duplex or two, a 16-unit townhome development and light commercial uses. To the east by commercial use, vacant land. To the south by vacant industrial land and industrial uses. And to the west by vacant land and an automotive repair shop. If the petitions are approved, the property would be developed to 750 residential units consisting of 600 condos, 75 townhomes, and 75 patio homes. Two conceptual layouts have been submitted for reference. Compliance with these layouts has not been proffered by the petitioner, and plans note that the layout is subject to change based on market demands. They also do not depict a layout for all 750 units. One shows 562 units, and the other shown here shows 282 units. The petitioner submitted six proffers as outlined in the packet. Proffers one through three relate to the number of units, stipulation that the product will be for sale, and the building height. Proffers four through six relate to traffic. Planning and engineering staff have concerns with these proffers. They are somewhat vague and attempt to commit the city to assist with improvements based on existing conditions, while it is the proposed development that causes the level of service to degrade below acceptable levels. I've highlighted some of those kind of key words here, and I'll be going through these in additional slides. The petitioner was required to submit a traffic study as part of this project, which shows that the 750 units will generate 4,923 new residential trips. This represents more than double the average current trip count for the portion of Wiggington Road between this development and Old Forest, which is approximately 4,100 according to VDOT's 2022 data. In addition, Wiggington Road has narrow lane widths, and 12-foot lanes are considered standard, but most of this corridor has approximately 10-foot lanes. The submitted traffic narrative shows that the US 501 southbound off-ramp left turns would degrade from a level of service C currently to D in the year 2040 with a no-build scenario. It will degrade to an F in the year 2040 build scenario. And when I say scenario, that is what will 2040 look like if this is not built, what will 2040 look like if this is built? Mitigation strategies recommended by the narrative include a traffic signal or roundabout at this location. Proffer number four indicates that the petitioner desires to complete a traffic study after 375 or half of the units are approved to determine whether this level of service has degraded to an E or worse, at which point they may decide to, whether the cost of the improvements would be worth continuing to build the rest of the units. This may indicate that the petitioner does not believe that the future actual conditions will match the conditions forecasted by the traffic study and expects that those improvements won't be necessary. This proffer, as with number six, mentions the city and other developers sharing the cost. Committing an outside developer to future costs is not something we've done before and it's not feasible. It would commit the city to a significant portion of the project cost because the wording of it says based on pro-rata share. So if the city is currently witnessing 4,100 trips, and they will be adding 4,900 trips, that's almost half. So staff also has concerns over the use of the term approved. Approved units does not necessarily mean that the units would be occupied at the time in the traffic study, which could skew the overall volume accounts. Traffic number five, sorry, traffic proffer number five indicates that the petitioner is willing to assist the city to make various street improvements by way of right-of-way dedication, easements, or stormwater detention. While it does benefit the city to have wider right-of-way in most cases, this would only account for about 600 feet of the corridor, which is the portion where they own frontage. The submitted traffic narrative shows that left-turn lanes into the site are warranted. Presumably, most of the needed right-of-way to add to these lanes would be dedicated by the petitioner from the frontage along the property they own as it relates to this proffer number five. These turn lanes are noted on the concept plans, but the petitioner has not proffered that they will construct the turn lanes as part of this rezoning petition. A right-turn lane is not warranted. The submitted traffic narrative also indicates the intersection of Wiggington Road and Old Forest will degrade from an overall level of service B in the current year to C in the year 2040 in both the build and the no-build scenarios. However, some movements degrade from D in the no-build scenario to an E in the build scenario. So the grade represents the overall functioning of the intersection, and the specific turn movements are also graded. Those together form the overall improvement score. The traffic narrative suggests mitigation of this issue by extending the turn lane from Wiggington onto Old Forest by 150 feet with a taper of 100 feet. Proffer six notes these improvements, however, the proffer states the petitioner will help the city and any other developer contributing to the trip, again, attempting to commit the city to a significant portion of the project cost while it is the proposed development that further degrades the level of service. It is also not feasible to enforce making another developer partially responsible for these proffers. I do have the data, I'm going to skip over that unless we feel like we need it. In summary, the development of the 750-unit residential development would have significant effects on the surrounding area. Approval of a development of this size without fully understanding how and when the traffic mitigation would be handled could result in detrimental impacts and does not represent the typical process for development approvals in the city. The location of the proposed development does have some advantages, being located near the expressway with appropriate utilities nearby, however, the location is not well-suited for this number of units. Approval of the development would result in more than twice the current traffic on Wiggington Road with 4,100 daily trips. The road and associated ramps and the intersection at Old Forest and Wiggington are functioning at an acceptable level of service. The proposed development, generating an additional 4,900 trips for a total of approximately 9,000 trips per day, would result in degraded levels of service. Contributing to this traffic, trips in and out of the development will likely be entirely car-dependent. Wiggington Road has narrow travel lanes, the 10-foot instead of the standard 12-foot, and lacks sidewalk. While everyday goods and services are a short drive away, the equivalent trip on foot would be approximately 25 minutes just to reach Old Forest Road and another 15 to reach a grocery store. There is no public transit service in this area. As a city with limited vacant sites for development, density is generally a good thing. However, density should be located where the infrastructure to accommodate it is in place or planned and where the surrounding land use. place or planned and where the surrounding land use is supported by meeting the needs of residents. Approving density in inappropriate locations forces the city to attempt to retroactively mitigate those impacts from the development, representing a reactive versus a proactive approach. Additionally, the proffers submitted by the petitioner ask the city to commit to improvements that are not yet fully developed, potentially including funding. The city's technical review committee reviewed this petition on November 19, 2024. Comments are, as noted in this report, for staff, for these reasons, staff recommends denial of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and who is here to present on behalf of the petitioner? Great, thank you. Please come forward and state your name, and there's a form there to sign on.
Thank you. Members of Planning Commission, thank you for your time today and your dedication to Lynchburg. I am Chris Langley, the developer of West Point. Thank you for coming out to see the 65-acre site last week and asking many great questions. Because you are so familiar with their plans, I will quickly read our presentation and keep our opening remarks brief by simply highlighting the massive need and benefits of West Point. Then let the citizens speak, and then our civil engineer Trent Warner and I will be available for questions and discussions. Here is why Lynchburg needs West Point desperately. Number one, Lynchburg homeownership rate is on the fast trajectory to 40%. The US Census study of 2010 shows homeownership at 59%. Today, we are at 48%, 11% drop. Once Tom Bell's 700 newly-built apartments get occupied and LU's 326 new dorm rooms get counted, homeownership will sink to 46% in Lynchburg in the next US Census report. The national average homeownership rate is 65%. What on earth are we doing in Lynchburg? It is up to leaders of Lynchburg to turn this alarming bad news around. West Point offers a solution to our homeownership crisis. 750 homes to own, and we proffer not to build apartments. Let's work together to make homeownership in Lynchburg a reality. Number two, what does our old city slogan "Live, Work, Play, and Lynchburg" mean to you, and why was this slogan recently dropped? Our city manager emphasized in his job interview that, and I quote him, "I want to make Lynchburg a place people want to stay," end quote. If live means rent, then we are succeeding. If live means own, then we are failing massively. I propose 750 homes to own to help revive our old city slogan and make the word "live" more realistic. Number three, employers need homes for the workforce to attract and retain quality employees. Workforce housing should be a priority for the EDA and Lynchburg leaders to focus on and make a reality. Framatone is hiring 515 new employees at an average salary of $130,000 per year. These new recruits need homeownership options, but let us not forget about the existing 100,000 workers we want to retain. Lynchburg has less than 15,000 owned homes in Lynchburg. We will add 750 new homes, which is a 5% increase in homeownership. Number four, the EDA recognizes that homeownership options are essential for Lynchburg's workforce, so much so that it has issued a request for proposal, RFP, to find a developer to buy and rezone 165 acres behind our West Point land to build homes, duplexes, and townhomes. Isn't this hypocritical for the city's EDA to sell land, then ask you, the Planning Commission, to rezone it, add cars to Wiggington, yet the planning department is not in full support of West Point? Number five, density is the cure. Our Lynchburg's appalling, appallingly low homeownership rate, or it, density is the cure for Lynchburg's appallingly low homeownership rate. Developers need to see that the PC and the CC will approve condos and townhomes. If not, we will descend to 40% homeownership. Tom Martin has preached for nearly two decades that, quote, "We're going to have to start having a conversation about density," end quote. Did you know that parts of Timberlake have 2,500 people per square mile, while most parts of Boonsborough and Wiggington have less than 500 people per square mile? Packing five times as many people into wards 3 and 4 as Ward 1 and keeping Ward 1 exclusively for R1, single-family, is the definition of exclusionary zoning. Why should Boonsborough remain 95% single-family homes? By the way, Manhattan has 72,918 people per square mile compared to Wiggington's 500 people per square mile. New York is a great example. As New York grows, or as New York grew, its leaders found countless ways to make transportation work. Necessity is the mother of all inventions. West Point will help Lynchburg leaders finally get around to improving Wiggington Road after 49 years after annexation, or annexing this neighborhood from Bedford and not doing any road improvements to Wiggington Road. We are a team player. We have proffered to help pay for road improvements and give extremely valuable land to the city and make road improvements. Number six, if not homeownership at West Point, what else would you accept here? The alternatives could be industrial. You would not turn down an industry such as Frito-Lay. The land was zoned industrial and has industrial land all around it. Or how about government housing? You could turn it down because it, or you would not turn down government housing because it would be considered exclusionary zoning. So West Point is the best choice. Number seven, West Point will have a massive economic impact. 300 new jobs for 10 years. That's what it takes to build 750 units. 3,000 full-time jobs over 10 years. New real estate taxes of 2,000, or 2, I'm sorry, $2 million or more per year, just in real estate taxes. Tom Martin advised me to show the city the ROI, return on investment, to the city when we discussed developing another location. 200 million over 100 years. I would bet no business in the history of Lynchburg has ever had an opportunity for this kind of ROI. The economic impact will be enormous. Think of all the road improvements and school improvements that could be done with $200 million the city receives in real estate taxes. In closing, Lynchburg desperately needs West Point. The needs are abundantly clear. If not here, where and when will we ever add homeownership of this magnitude in Lynchburg? We are the local team player and developer that Lynchburg should team up with to improve Wiggington Road. We have offered six proffers that are more generous than any developer in Lynchburg's history. Governor Yonkin has called on Virginians to make Virginia home. Let's do this. Let's do this. Let's provide much-needed homeownership to our workforce, young people, and senior citizens. When making your decision, you should look at the overall pros and cons. If the pros massively outweigh the cons, vote yes. We can work out the little details. Please do not let one fixable thing derail what is best for Lynchburg. I ask you to vote for this great project. I promise you will be glad you did. We will be happy to answer questions after the citizen presentations. Thank you for your consideration. Rachel, could you add this to the, if I gave you a copy, can you add it to the minutes?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'm sure we have some people to speak in favor, so if you want to speak in favor, please come forward and state your name and sign on the form as Mr. Langley finishes. And Rachel, are you keeping time?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Parr. I want to start off by saying thank you for taking the time to listen to what I have to say. It's a privilege to be able to be here and cast a perspective. I'll start off by saying a little bit about myself. I have a lovely wife, four amazing daughters, and I own a commercial building in Lynchburg where we have a gym inside called The Heroes Home. We planted roots in Lynchburg. My kids will grow up here, and I care about the future of this area. That's why I feel that it's my duty to speak and highlight some perspectives. I heard about this meeting through some friends, one of whom is John, who lives on Wiggington. He can't be here tonight, but either way, I'll speak for us both as we share the same perspective. There is a need for new housing in Lynchburg. Lynchburg is behind. Everywhere I look, there is either no good housing or it's houses for rent. My wife and I sold our house we had in Lynchburg a few years back. We used the profit from the sale to put back into our business. Homeownership gave us the ability to build wealth, which was the fuel for our business in Lynchburg. We have almost 20 employees now, all of which continue to have a job because we had the ability to own a home. We should be continuously striving to have new homes developed, homes which people own and plant roots in Lynchburg. I want that for myself, I want that for my kids, and I want that to be an option for all those in Lynchburg. I will tell you a story about one of my employees. His name is Tyler. He's amongst my best. I had a conversation with him two weeks ago. He's looking to buy a house. He talked about the limited supply, that most everything is for rent and not for sale. He made the statement that what is for sale is older houses priced too high. And he said, and I quote, he literally said this, "Maybe it's time to leave Lynchburg." My best employee, who's 29, said, "Maybe it's time to leave Lynchburg." I don't believe that. I don't want that. I want him, myself, and my kids to have more options to buy and stay here. I'm around a younger crowd often. Our gym does jiu-jitsu, does CrossFit. It attracts a younger population. They don't want older houses. They don't have the skill set or the extra money to fix it up. They want new developments, and they need to have the ability to buy and not rent. They need the ability to build that wealth, and they need that here in Lynchburg. And the thought when one of them tells me, "Well, maybe I'll just go elsewhere," is why I'm up here. Whatever drawback there may be, and in hearing those, it seems that it is traffic, which, in my opinion...
Excuse me. Thank you.
That's what I had in mind.
We'll note that, traffic, yeah.
Traffic. Hey, thank you.
Anybody else here to speak in favor? Please be sure to sign your name there on the paper. Thank you. Sign your name right there. You got it from here? You got it from here?
Yes, thank you. This is a beautiful room. My first time in here. My name is Mary Jane DeSager, and I am, I'm coming here. At age 83, I found a condo that fit the new needs of my lifestyle in retirement. It meant leaving the home I had lived in for 50 years in Lynchburg. And I raised three girls there. The home I had in the city, well, actually, I had two homes side by side, one rented. The maintenance just became too much for me. My husband had passed away, and one home had a pool, and the yards were big, and the trees needed trimming, and I, at the urging of my three daughters, began looking for something else. I loved, I loved the city, and I, we looked around, all around in Lynchburg for what might work for me, and we began to branch out a little further and a little further, and we came in to the community of Farmington, and brand-new condos were built there. One unit, I guess it was a multi-unit, was finished. People were moving in, and the next one was to be finished in a few months. And as I looked at it, I thought, this will meet my needs, had plenty of storage, and the buildings were done so that, like, a guest room and a guest bath would be at one end of the condo, and the main bedroom and larger bathroom was, so you would feel comfortable having company at any time, a large kitchen, and a dining room, and a living room. It was plenty of room for me.
I'm sorry, you're three minutes up, and we take that into advisement. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry?
We only have three minutes per speaker.
Yes.
So...
Shall I just wind it up?
Wind it up really quick.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know about that three-minute thing. Okay, so I moved from Windsor Hills in Timberlake and was able to sell my home for $250,000 and buy a condo in Forest, and everything has worked out well. Gone through this in two years ago, and I can personally recommend it, and I am strongly encouraging your commission to approve a proposed community. It will be desirable to thousands of retirees, and in my building, there are lots of young professionals as well and good friends. So I promote this with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I get that, that one paper? This one's mine. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that one's yours.
Do you want me to sign my address?
You don't have to. You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in favor? Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Greg Lester, and I'm a partner with Elevate Communities. I've been a developer for 25 years. My early work was in Bedford County, having done something over 850 mixed-use homes at both West Crossing and Farmington. Farmington being on Parable Road, a two-lane road, very similar to Wiggington Road. I've been asked by my young friend Carter Leverick, who grew up in Ward 1 of Lynchburg, to deliver his message today. He is currently a senior at Liberty School of Law, and he's representing the university today at a national debate competitions, or otherwise he would have been here to deliver this. Carter says, "Dear members of the Lynchburg City Planning Commission, Lynchburg has been an exceptional place for my three siblings and me to grow up. However, I am concerned that my fiancee and I will not be able to find an affordable, safe, and low-maintenance home in the Lynchburg-Boonsborough area. It is for these reasons that I write to you. I'm currently in my final semester of law school. I've recently become engaged, and I've accepted a job with Gentry Lock, and I will work at their Lynchburg office after taking the bar this July. I grew up in Boonsborough area, Ward 1, where my family and friends live, and to me..." I grew up in Boonesboro area, Ward 1, where my family and friends live, and to me, Ward 1 is home. I would like to continue to live in this area of town, and I'm not interested in renting. Like most young professionals, I'm interested in chasing the American dream of homeownership." Ward 1 does not really allow me to achieve this goal. Lynchburg has too many places to rent and not enough places to own. Most houses that are for sale in Ward 1 are either out of our price range or older homes that require extensive renovations and lots of maintenance upkeep. Angie's List states that renovations of older homes can start at around $100,000. So an older home at $300,000 ends up being $400,000. I was thrilled that a new neighborhood might be built just seven minutes from my parents' home on Wiggington Road. It is not another massive apartment community to rent like those popping up left and right on Grays Mill and Timberlake. It will be a modern community like the one where my older sister and her brother bought their first townhome in Durham, North Carolina. A community with amenities and low maintenance that will be safe and desirable to own a home and start a family. He says, "It is time that Lynchburg allowed Ward 1 to grow and enabled the possibility of homeownership to be achievable for young buyers like me. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Carter Leverett, Ward 1 Lynchburg resident."
Thank you for this time this afternoon.
My name is Peter Baldwin. I live in Boxwood, out Wiggington Road, and I've seen the signs about this possible upcoming development. They had a neighborhood meeting at the Dwell Facility, which is near the Crosswhite Fitness Center. And I went there for about an hour and listened to what they had to say, and I'm very pleased with what they are proposing. When you come up the expressway and you take the exit, as I go home, it's, I think a first-class community there will uplift that whole area. I think it'll be good for the Boonesboro area, Wiggington Road, as well as Lynchburg. I don't have as many words as Carter this evening, but I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else speak in favor? Please come forward. All right. Anybody here to speak in opposition to this? Please come forward, state your name, and sign on the form.
Thank you. My name is Jason Kalila, and I am representing over 100 residents, mostly of Wiggington Road, Boxwood, Bethel Estates, and Bethel Park. Does that afford me the 10 minutes?
If you've got something coming, is there a petition?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I have all the signatures here.
Yeah, I was saying, is it 10 or 12?
10 minutes.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I empathize with the previous people that have spoke regarding the housing issue and the affordability issue in Lynchburg, although I do question Mr. Langley's comparison of Lynchburg to New York City. Now, my, we have major concerns with this rezoning. Many have been expressed by Rachel regarding the traffic, but I would just like to reiterate. First of all, it looks like the previous rezoning was for 200 residential homes, and I read the rezoning petition, they were supposed to be mostly empty Nestor homes to reduce the traffic burden. So our first major concern is traffic. Adding 750 new homes would potentially add 750 to, what, 1,500 more cars on the road. One area that I don't believe was addressed was the intersection of 501 and Old Forest Road. That 501 expressway, as you all know, is one lane, and talking to the traffic commissioner, that is the most complained-about intersection in Lynchburg. There's also currently no funding that has been appropriated to approve that intersection. Right now, during rush hour times, that 8:00 AM period, that 5:00 PM period, you can expect to wait five to six light cycles, each light cycle taking about three minutes, each light cycle lets through approximately 10 cars. At a very conservative estimate, if 250 people from that new community commute during those times, that could create a backup of approximately an hour. Our second concern is the additional traffic posing a safety hazard to Wiggington Road. As Rachel stated, it is a narrow road, there are no shoulders, there are no sidewalks. Living on Wiggington Road, it's already precarious to walk my dogs, bike, run on the road. Secondly is the infrastructure strain and its effect on emergency response and safety. Wiggington Road has really three places or three different ingresses and egresses. That's that 501 ramp, that's Hawkins Mill, and that is Old Forest Road. Most of the first responders come from that 501 expressway. And so if people are coming home from work, again, adding approximately an hour onto that weight of 501 and Old Forest Road, that could impede the ability of first responders to serve the residents on Wiggington Road. Our final concern, and there's some more on here, but I want to be brief because we're going over meeting time, is the reactive infrastructure planning. The developers state that, you know, the additional tax revenue would provide for improvements in infrastructure. However, after the people have moved in, after they've paid their taxes, after a traffic study has been done, after the city has determined that improvements in infrastructure need to be performed, then collecting bids, planning, contracting, and actually making these changes would likely have harmful effects on the citizens of Lynchburg for approximately, what, five to 10 years after the homes have been built and the effects on traffic have occurred. Can I leave this petition with you all? Or can I give it to Rachel? Sorry, I came unprepared, I didn't realize I should have printed out multiple copies.
Anybody else here to speak in opposition of this? Okay.
Hello, hi there. Thank you for having me. My name's Deborah Armstrong. I live on Wiggington, Bethel Estates specifically. Bought my house there in 2014 and travel the road every day. Like Jason, I'd like to reiterate that the road is very narrow, very curvy without sidewalks, or it's often very scary to even walk on it. It's a very, very busy intersection, as you all know, with 501, with Old Forest Road. I live out more toward the Hawkins Mill exit, but I'm very concerned about the burden of the traffic, the infrastructure needs that this will bring, that the lag that Jason spoke about in getting all of those things done, the burden on the city to pony up and have to do a lot of that kind of retrofitting. This concerns me as well. And I do empathize with people needing homes, first-time home buyers, I was one once myself. I think Boonesboro, we do need to open up to more people, but maybe, maybe not in this particular spot with this particular amount of density. It's a horrible traffic jam coming from Old Forest, getting onto 501, that light with the protected left. I mean, you've seen it, everybody's been there, it's from Fresh Market all the way to the light, you're stuck, you're trying to get over there, it's just going to get a million times worse. I've seen backups in the morning from the Peaks View, our exit, Wiggington exit, all the way to 501 with that light where you can't turn right on red and all that, it's just going to get exponentially worse. So I'm concerned for convenience, I'm concerned for safety. I don't want to be a NIMBY and say not where I live, but maybe if we moderate and not have so much in one particular area, and we try to spread it out a little bit, that's my concern. So, thank you.
My name's Dean Anderson, and I live in Boxwood as well, on Wiggington Road. And I guess I've got some concerns, some questions that I haven't heard fully answered. So I don't want to go against the protocol to say I'm for it or against it, I don't know enough to know, so, to err on the side of safety. So obviously, everybody's talked about traffic. And if you travel that area very often, again, I've lived there for 17 years now. Bought that house planning to flip it in five, but we really liked that neighborhood, and so we've stayed there. But the traffic is a concern today on Wiggington Road. If you go down Wiggington Road, I would encourage you to do that, and envision something happened to your car, and you've got to pull off the road right now. I'd like for you to show me where you do that, without being in somebody's driveway or a business. So, again, as some of the other folks have said, during busy times, there's limited routes of egress. You know, you're going to go out, and you've already got horrific traffic problems that the city has yet to figure out how to deal with. So, let's put, what was the number, 4,000 more into the mix? And I hear that we have plans to do some things to that road, but I didn't hear a lot of specifics, and what I heard was, "Well, we're going to do that, and we'll look at it again in a couple or three years and see." Have you guys seen a problem that got fixed in the city in a couple or three years after you looked at it? Please don't take that in an offensive way, I don't mean it that way. The other comment I have is, I hear the developer tell us that, the biggest sell I'm hearing, and it's admirable, and I don't disagree with it, is to be owned property, purchased property, as opposed to rental property. I'm also hearing them say it's going to take 10 years to do this project. What is it that holds their feet to the fire for the next nine, to make sure that that is in fact what they're going to give us? Is purchased property and something that doesn't morph into just more rental units and more condos? Is there, maybe there is. Again, I'll plead ignorant to those things that might do that. But there's a lot of concerns there. The biggest one I have is a school bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? All right, I don't see anybody else coming forward, so I'd like to ask for rebuttals, you know, kind of go back over some of these issues. We have several, traffic being a big one, and maybe some of the, some of the issues about development timeline.
Sure. More than likely, I got a feeling I'll probably be up here for traffic discussions with your own questions that you'll end up having. And I appreciate the opportunity, I love this process, this is my favorite meeting. The neighborhood meetings are great, too. We did have the one meeting there. But I love when I hear from the neighbors and what their concerns are. And what I love to be able to say is, "We're here to help, we're here to make things better that you're already having, your own situations. We are really the answer to a lot of your issues, and we're going to make things better." We are local developers, that have been doing it a long time. My name is Trent Warner. I work for Elevate Communities, the development company that's going to do this. I've been designing projects in and around Lynchburg for 31 years. So I want to take a few minutes to be able to answer these questions. And Jason, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name there. I guess I can read it here, although I can't read that.
It's a little weird.
Okay, sure. And I'd be happy to talk to you about these things. There is an answer to the intersection that many of you have complained about. A lot of us locally call it the old Billy Kraft Honda intersection, the 221 intersection. The city, and as we were doing our own background research for this project, has a massive intersection improvement project, that they have an engineer, they are bringing onboard to design it. We've looked at their schedule and our schedule, and we think it fits perfectly. So, help is coming, and the city's got that coming. It's a $77 million project that does have funding for it. The safety hazards on Wiggington Road, we see that, too. The 12-foot lanes, I might dispute a little bit that they have to be 12 feet, it's probably an 11-foot lane. But our left-turn lanes that we're required to put in will help, will be widening on our side of the roadway. So, Dean, when you were saying earlier about being able to pull over, we're going to have an extra lane there that's not there now. So hopefully, that's going to help that. In emergency response, Jason, the left-turn lanes are going to help that as well because there's another direction for the vehicles to go around. As far as reactive infrastructure, we've done a lot of homework. I can show it here on screen, but we know that the roadways are going to be improved. We've proffered some off-site proffers, and we'll get into that certainly. But the water lines, that's probably the biggest water line that I've connected to for any development. And we luckily have sewer line being placed at the other end. So, it's not reactive, we actually are being pretty proactive. And Deborah, I think your issues about the backups in the morning are about to be improved with the $77 million intersection improvement set in construction for schedule, and Lee can correct me if I'm wrong, but 2031 to end construction of that, which fits our plan nicely. And that, I think those answered those questions, and I'm happy to come up and answer your questions as well.
Yeah, we'll call you back up again, you have like three minutes, and then I believe our opposition group has three minutes to also...
Okay. I tried to rush those as fast as I could.
Come back on any of those comments, and then we'll call you back up for more questions.
Okay, sure, great, thank you.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Yes, you'll have three minutes also, before we close the public hearing.
So, I'm sorry, I'm terrible in names. Trent? So Trent addressed the 501 and 221 intersection, but he did not address the 501 Old Forest Road intersection. And that was the intersection that I cited, that was the most complained-about intersection to the traffic commissioner. Again, Wiggington Road will back up to almost the on-ramp sometimes in the morning, and then it will back up all the way from that intersection to the 221-501 intersection in the evening as well. And that would impede any first responders. The second question I had is, what about the rest of the length of Wiggington Road and safety? We can assume that many of the residents of this new community will take Wiggington Road to Hawkins Mill, then Hawkins Mill to 221 to get to Forest where there's many jobs. The rest of Wiggington Road is presently not a very safe road to walk on. And as the other gentleman alluded to, if your car breaks down, there is no place for you to put it. So, how would those additional cars affect the rest of Wiggington Road? Again, 1,000 new cars on the road, let's just conservatively assume one quarter of them use Wiggington Road to get Hawkins Mill to 221. That's about 250 more cars driving down a very narrow, windy country road. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so the public comment is over, and Mr. Warner, if you'd like to come back up, I'm sure there's a lot of questions to be asked. And do we have anybody from Traffic Engineer here? Oh, we do. Well, you know, maybe, I mean, maybe that would be Traffic Engineer, is that...
I don't know that they've prepared remarks, but I mean, they are here to answer questions.
Maybe Mr. Warner can explain exactly what their plans are, because there's some questions about the intersections, and I think there's a tie between the whole project, I think is all tied together, yeah.
Does it sound like we're going to have that, that are going to tie into that?
So, we'll start with Mr. Warner.
Okay, I'm not sure if I can get the screen to look exactly at what we need here, but the, so the $77 million intersection that we discussed earlier, there's a couple images that I have here that may help. So the intersection that you're referring to, Jason, is this, this one up here? If you can see where my mouse is going, right in here.
501.
That's, that's the 501 Old Forest Road intersection. That is part of the $77 million intersection. I've got a blow-up here, if you want to take a look at that later, I can show it to you. But that's part of what Lee and his group are fixing that really help us out. I mean, that's, that was part of our, heck yes, let's go do this thing now. We've been acquiring seven parcels for five years to put this together, and this is perfect timing for us. timing for us. What I did want to discuss a little bit, just open up here. So this is another layout. This shows that same intersection here. And Chuck, you had asked the question earlier in person about how many units would we end up having. I've got that, too, as that question comes up, as you bring it. But I want to talk a little bit about our proffers, if I can get to you.
Can I inject something before you get started?
Yes, sir, please.
The reason this, you pointed over to my question about this. I'll be frank, I personally, I'm not fully convinced about the whole deal of Wiggington Old Forest Road being a great pressure valve, particularly evenings. My concern revolves less around the egress from the property, lots of bad enough, but what it's going to look like in the afternoons. And there is no turn lane over there coming, when people are coming back. So my concern mostly centers around the 501 entry off of Old Forest Road personally, when you're talking about that $77 million 2031 project.
Okay, yep. So I wanted to show this a little bit, too, because this hasn't been brought up. But this does impact our proffer. So I want to make sure to show why we are, and Chris mentioned this about being team players, and Rachel didn't mention it because it is off-site. But it does have an impact on us and our bottom line. So it does make a big impact. But I just wanted to get you aware that she did not bring up that the fact that the EDA is taking bids, if you will, to sell their property. We have sixty-five acres and they have 165 acres. They're trying to entertain bids to have someone develop it. We passed on that because we'll be busy doing this. We're pro business. We want development around us, but we will not be doing that one. But knowing that that's coming and it's on the front burner for the city and the EDA because of the jobs that are coming, it impacted our proffers. And I'll describe that as we get into it. Just do it here. Let me go run down here. So I'm going to show this, maybe if I go down just a little bit. I was going to click too far. Okay. So the traffic study and what we ran into, there are really two hotspots that our development causes. This is intersection number one, which I'm circling here, has the yellow circle around it. This is the intersection you're referring to with Wiggington Road, which is the yellow road, and Old Forest Road. The other hotspot that we run into is intersection three. There were four intersections that were studied. Through the TRC process, Lee and Ryan asked us to study intersection one and see what can we do to improve that one. We do have the answer to that. What's happening is, and Ryan can probably express it a little bit more, he's the one that actually told us about the issue that made us look at this, is the right turn lane is just too short. So people that are coming from Bethel Park, from Jefferson Woods, not Jefferson Woods, but from the west, that are coming on Wiggington Road to go to Walmart, for example, probably recognize that the cars that are going right are stopping the cars from going left. The stack up just gets too long. So the way to fix that, and what we have proposed through our traffic study, is extend the right turn lane and let two lanes turn left. So the right turn lane that we're extending is going to end up being a right, a straight, and a left. And then what's there now will be a dedicated left. So there'll be two lanes there. So I want to go through that because the second hotspot that we have, and I'll explain it here, in our development, just to let you know, is this little red thing that you can kind of make out right there. That's our site. So the second intersection that we have a hotspot for is this southbound ramp. And we refer to it as the three Vs. People coming from Boonesboro, the people coming from Bedford or Big Island and Boonesboro, Big Island, and I forgot what the third V was.
Buna Vista.
Buna Vista, we'll go Buna Vista. All right, anybody that wanted to go to Walmart, for example, cut over Wiggington Road and they use that left? And what happens is, when we have 750 units and the people that are coming out, there's a perfect intersection like this right now in the city over to Airport Road, but you can't ever make that left because too many cars are going across you. So the way to fix that is with a signal or a roundabout. And that does fix it. Certainly does. And we recognize that, too. The problem is, as the developer, the question becomes, why do we pay 100% of those two problems, knowing that there's city traffic on it now? The first intersection is 900 feet from our entrance. The other one is 1.2 miles away. And we're asked to pay all of it. And we just think as team players, we should be asking to do our pro rata share. We'll pay for the park that our cars are on. So we want to work with the city. It's a little bit different than what they've been used to, but I'll ask this question. How many developers have fixed an intersection 1.2 miles away? So you're asking for something that's a little bit different as well. So we have been expressing that we're willing to do what our fair share is. The last part, the last mitigation that we have to do is left turn lanes into our entry points. We know that. The city knows that, too. It was in the traffic study. We had a conversation why we didn't make it a proffer. It's not a proffer because it's a requirement. We're proffering things that we offer. The turn lanes are required. We know that. So we didn't make it a proffer. But we do know that we're going to build them. The last part I'd like to say is, some of the feedback that we've gotten from people around the city is about Ward One. Development can happen at other places, but it can't happen here. And I know we talk about Wiggington Road and you're right, it does have narrow lanes and no shoulder. But again, we're here to fix it. Where our entry points are, we will make that wider. We will have our left turn lanes. The road will be wider at that location. We have to do that. We can't build an inferior roadway. Lee and Ryan wouldn't let us. But the ADT to say that we are doubling it is true. But if you don't put it in context, it doesn't help. So just to let you know, Wiggington Road has 3,800 vehicles on it every day. When you add our traffic, in ten years, it'll be 8780. That's less than Old Grays Mill Road, less than Rivermont Avenue near Bedford Avenue, less than Ward's Ferry Road near College Square. We are not the order of magnitude of the Rosedale development. That's 23,000. We're not Old Forest Road at Lakeside Drive. We're not even Timberlake Road near the Kroger Shopping Center. That's 33,000. What I'm trying to say is that we have capacity. It has room to grow. Did that help?
Good explanation, yeah.
Are there questions that you might have?
One of the questions kind of floating around centers upon the proposal itself, looking at the condo units, which, kind of a two-part question. One, it's kind of being sold as having some other units in there as well, some townhouses and some single-family units. What is the probability in your view of maybe those ever being developed? I mean, factually, let's be honest, Frank.
Sure, sure. No, I really think the layout that you see in front of us is what we're going to go with. So what we have, the little, the red layouts that you see, we have townhomes up front at Wiggington. We want to protect the neighborhood as there are townhomes already across the street. That'll sort of be the buffer that insulates us from condo buildings. The rest of the blue that you see all the way down, and we like to call this West Point Boulevard, West Point Boulevard will have the condos, buildings, all along the way to the first roundabout. That to us is first phase, the first phase of the project. Those will be three stories high. We ask for three and a half stories because the ground slopes away. So that half story that's in the proffer is for the lower units on the backside. But from the street side, it's going to be three stories. When we get to halfway, there's probably an inventory that is, is this working?
How many phases are you talking about here?
More than likely two.
Two. So the townhouses would be phase two?
The townhouses would be in our first phase up front.
First phase, okay. Phase two would be more, now you're going to build the, where the funeral home is there, you're planning on putting clubhouse?
That's where our clubhouse will be, yes, sir. And then when we get to that first roundabout, while we don't want to double a mistake if it's not working out like we wanted it to. But you have given us, if we get this proffer approved, you've given us the ability to pivot. When we get in the back half, we have up to 75 townhomes or patio homes. And there's another layout that we did that does that and it still works. So instead of proffering a condition that says we're doing it by the layout, we're asking for something different, which is something different than Rachel was used to, is we're proffering the mix, not the layout. So that's what we'd like to do with this plan. We think it's a smarter way of doing it.
So let me address this gentleman's concern here somewhat, too, because I would share that if this were going near me. So we're looking at these, one, what is, there's a couple of parts to this. One is, what are the square footage versus price ranges going to be? Two, there's going to be a homeowner association, I assume, and of course, it's condos, so you're going to have something like that there anyway. And I think your concern, sir, was that what's the guarantee these aren't going to be later converted into a giant apartment complex for rentals?
That's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. Something that I should have said before. So in the marketplace, as many people have already mentioned, the city is sort of in a rut, if you will, of rentals.
Agreed.
Right? So for us, we have to pay a real estate tax, obviously based on how the unit is assessed, right? And so we're selling them for 300,000. That's the real estate tax, which is much higher than what a rental would be. So for someone that has multiple units in their development, his real estate tax is going to be much less than if ours, if we decided to start making them all rentals, which we won't because we proffered that they're for sale. But if we did that, we would price ourselves out of the market.
What's the price range you're talking about?
Yep. So I've got it right here in this little bit, piece of it. It's kind of a square there, our documents oriented better. But we're in the 200 to 450 range. We think we're going to be, our home run is the 300 range.
What's the 200 look like? Is that a single bedroom?
It's probably a single room, right? One bedroom.
One bedroom? Less than 1,000 square feet?
Yeah. And I do the engineering part. Chris is the marketing guru, so he could probably rattle those off a little better than I just did. But that's our market. That's where we see the missing pricing is in the city. Someone said before, you try, or his employee tried to buy a home, if one goes on the market, you're through the roof. So we think we're going to open that market up because of a lot of downsizing seniors that want to move out of their home are finally going to be able to move out and have level, one-level living.
I do share the vision that this, we're kind of in the middle of a comprehensive plan right now and we need to be thinking about what kind of city we want to live in. A city that has 40% stakeholder residency is headed on a bad path, in my view, nearly 60% non-stakeholders living in the city. More ownership is something that personally I've been pressing for. I do have some serious concerns about where the traffic's going to go. I know the city does have some plans and some money allotted, apparently between the $77 million. I could put something in there. Don't have all the details on yet. I would like to see some more about that. But personally, I will support the plan as proposed because I think we do need more ownership in the city.
Well, thank you for saying that. And I'd also like to say, we're not trying to hide from the improvements. We know what the improvements need to be, that they have concerns, too. We also want to improve it for our own sales. It'd be foolish to try to build something that people can't leave because then people don't buy. So we want to do that, too. We just wanted to make the proffer say, we're willing to pitch in our fair share for an intersection that's 900 feet away or one that's 1.2 miles away.
So Mr. Warner, you have two pictures in the packet and one has 600, 562 homes and then the other one has the 282. So is the five, the 500, is that the densest you're expecting? Oops. It's the first visualization with a bunch of condo buildings.
They would be capped by the number of units they're proffering regardless of what this plan shows because this plan is.
That's why I'm asking, yeah.
So he noticed, you're right, because on our key, we don't get to 750, we got to 562. For us, we came up with a number that had 32 units, I believe, in each one. We can actually make that more dense in each of those rectangles if we just did one-bedroom units, for example. So in the particular one that you have, we have a mix of ones, twos, and threes. But if the ones are getting hot, maybe in the back end, we'll do, we could do, end up, instead of 32, we could end up with 38 units. What is it?
Forty-eight.
Could be 48 in that same rectangle. So that's why we have the mix of the number. So the push for us is, the traffic study was 750, okay? And that's because that's the max that we think we could do in that same layout.
In the same building layout?
In the same building layout.
You would proffer that the building layout would be one of these two?
That's correct. So we would go, well, for example, even in the second one, we're showing a fourplex. That's, I don't know if I have that here. You've got it in the back one there? Yeah. Nope, right there. Oh, that's a good point. So these are the two layouts that we've done. And I'll just tell you, this is two, this is two of many we've done in our own office. And that's why we don't want to be tied to a particular layout. What we want to be tied to is the number of units. So our study was the max number of units. That's the worst-case scenario. So we've studied these intersections at worst-case scenario, which is again, why we proffered when we get halfway through, we know that we have not degraded the intersections halfway through. So that's why we proffered it halfway through. But if we wanted to pivot and do townhomes, we want to be able to do townhomes without coming back here. That's what we're trying to avoid with the max number.
Trent, what, 10 years? Why, I mean, why, what does, it seems like the last one you guys did on Offleasville, you know, you did it in a year.
Yeah.
A year and a half or whatever, but why so long?
My guess is staging the market. You don't want to price yourself out and glut the market and then you can't sell anything. So I think it's a steady rate for us that we feel like we can manage and build. Our builder is a builder here. He's out in Guatemala right now getting watered. The Guatemalans, he's on a mission trip, but he'll be here at city council. But it was a number that he felt like we could continuously do and stay in a procedural way all the way through.
Play the commission. It pleases the commission. You know, planning staff is not the only division that had concerns about the traffic. I think it would be fair to offer engineering if they want to respond to some of the things that have been said. If you want to call on them, they are here and I ask them to be here to answer questions for you. Not to volunteer anybody, but just a reminder that they're our city resource for it.
You know, we've, I feel like we've kicked the can around about multifamily and density and usually it's around areas that have plenty of infrastructure. One of the issues is how are we addressing areas that don't? We've talked about this in the conference of plan as well. So I'd love to hear about the potential. So I'd, I'd love to hear about the potential resolutions to the traffic, if there are some. And they'll probably call you back up again, Mr. Warner.
Okay.
Rach, just real quick, if I can, the emergency services had, had no concerns?
Uh, they, they did. So in the report, check out two new papers, I'll be here.
Sorry, I thought that, that would be a quick.
That's okay. So the city's fire marshal did not comment on it, but, um, city's police department noted concerns regarding rezoning the properties with no proper layout and, um, traffics, the safety impacts to Wiggington Road and the southbound entrance to 501 and the intersection of 501 and Old Forest. Well, so, so I think at the time they reviewed this, there was actually not even a layout. But their concern was, they weren't sure what they were looking at without, without a layout. And just, just to kind of hit on the, some of the things that, you know, we had talked about internally and the things that have been brought up here, um, you know, the Old Forest Road intersection with the extended turn lane and the taper, you know, it was presented that that was, they proposed to extend it. They proposed to help the city extend it. When it is their development that is causing level of service to degrade below acceptable levels, um, I will also point out that there's no lefts allowed in the, um, the $77 million interchange, meaning a lot of trips are going to be driven directly to Old Forest Road. If they want to go anywhere on Old Forest, um, to the left or right from the Wiggington intersection, there's really no reason for them to go to the new interchange because they'd have to go all the way around to get back to Old Forest. And I think it's a dangerous game to play to say, we'll, we'll, we'll use tax revenue to fund improvements when the need is, I'm not saying there's no need now, but the need is becoming more pressing when it's the traffic generated by this development that is making the situation worse.
What's the progression, its expectation for the increase in traffic? I mean, from the time of first occupancy of one of these units to when it's anticipated to be a problem, say, 1,000?
Yeah, we have.
Versus when this highway project is, is slated to be completed?
So.
Six years?
The proffer that we put was about halfway through, we'll study it again because that's the year we forecast that we would be halfway through the same year that they're done with this intersection. And that starts 2025. In reality, we're going to have to spend a couple of years of designing and engineering. So my guess is they will be well, well done before we're halfway through. So that's why I said it works perfectly with our schedule. And also I would like to say just a little bit of something what Rachel said there. They're building $77 million intersection, and they themselves have not fixed the left turn problem. They made it worse, right? Because you can't turn left at Old Forest Road. So they're putting it on Wiggington. That's another reason why I think we should do our pro-rata share. Why should we fix that intersection if they didn't? It's not that big of a deal, I think, that we shared that expense.
Just a comment on, on what Trent talked about with the, there's no left there. That was, when that's designed, that $70 million project, there were very little left turn movements there. That's why it didn't warrant enough to put in a left turn lane at that location, as it has been studied, just to let you guys know that.
There's one thing, though. We've talked around this, but as, as we, as we go forward, this is a general comment, and I'm sorry, I just got to make it. The issue at the end of the day is, Wiggington Road is Wiggington Road, and it ain't the only road like that in Lynchburg. But because of the limitations of that road, we're having discussions about what kind of development that we can have along that, along that corridor, if you will. So as we start to think about stuff going forward, you know, making that road viable is, is kind of an issue. I mean, it's fine to talk about that, Bob, I realize we don't, their financial situations as well, but the back half of Wiggington Road, um, I grew up in Lynchburg, I used to love those roads. I'm old now, I've got old people to take care of, and I can't, can't deal with that stuff anymore. We've got a lot of roads like that, and we're getting more of them because we build them like that. We come to a situation where we try to have a development like this that perhaps makes sense, and it just gets worse. And I think, um, I'm sorry, I got the same problem Trent had. Jason, I apologize, I can't try your last name, but you're exactly right. There's a number of roads we can't walk on. There's a number of roads we can't do anything on because we're going through this stuff. So I'm off my high horse, but as we move forward with traffic projects, thinking about that makes a lot of sense. On this particular project, um, you know, this is an opportunity for us to do a fairly well-thought-out project that's now limited because of the fact that we'll have a real traffic problem. I appreciate your comments about, you know, this isn't like other parts of the city, but, you know, I, I think we need to figure out some way, and this is directly to Trent's comment about, if, if we're willing to work together to solve this problem, I realize you're concerned about putting the city on the hook, but it seems to me that we're at a perfect confluence between projects that are getting ready to be done, developers are ready to work with us as we move forward with some of these projects. And, and can we talk a little bit about how that, how that might possibly work out as opposed to, um, as opposed to try and shift things around?
Well, I would like to have the traffic engineer just kind of give us a breakdown of what's going to be happening at that intersection. I think it's important timeframe, timeline, as you know, right now, because I think that's part of the, you know, part of the question.
Did you want to speak to that?
He doesn't want to get up.
He's the project manager for that, and there's been a lot of delays on that project for some other reasons.
Sure.
What I didn't mean to say was the city's fault, by the way.
So the project is moving forward. We have had delays. It is funded, and it is 77 to 80 million dollar project. We are currently hiring, getting under contract a consultant to continue the project. We had one that started it, got us to the point where we are. They could not finish the project, so the city had to let them go. So that put us in probably about a two and a half year delay trying to go through that process and getting another con, uh, consultant onboard.
Can you say who the A and E is now, as they've been selected?
Uh, we are in negotiations with them, so I cannot say that yet. We do not have a contract quite yet. So I'm sorry, what was your question originally?
Just looking for an idea of timeline. They're talking about that they're building timeline, like to hear some of these improvements because that does take care of, well, it doesn't take care of some of the issues, it takes care of your issue with the traffic backing up from 501 north crossing Old Forest Road because of flyover and also the southbound traffic.
So the projected timeline right now is to get under construction sometime in summer of 2028 and hopefully be finished sometime in 20, late 2030, early 2031.
Anybody else have any questions about that?
Yeah, just, so, so, um, just from a naysayer standpoint, then, then we're going to be in construction for, for, with reduced traffic as we go through that construction process, or will it all of a sudden cut over in, in 2030?
So, yes, I mean, obviously we, we're, the theory, the, or the best scenario is to have traffic flowing the best we can.
Sure.
Construction projects, you know, will reduce traffic. That is building the new lanes on the south side of, um, of the existing Old Forest Road that will be the northbound lanes. So that will be done, uh, not in traffic, so that will not deter the traffic.
Sure.
Um, but while we're building the bridge over lanes of, uh, Old Forest Road, yes, you know, you, you have to be in traffic there.
Yes, sir.
Um, and then there will be quite a bit of improvements on 221, which really doesn't affect the flow we're talking about here, but there will be a lot of improvements on 221.
When do you expect to have the A and E signed on or EPC, whoever's doing it?
It is going through our procurement department currently.
Do you have to narrow it down?
Procurement and DDOT, so.
So within your, right of way, I assume, is, is not yet, has it been identified? There's a design, what phases of design is, 75%?
The design was probably, it was in different phases for different parts. The hydraulics part of it was probably 20%, but the alignment part of it was more in these 75 to 8% of it.
So the next three years before construction will be identifying constructor, be finalizing designs to 80% or so, and then acquiring rights of way? Is that right?
So the majority of the right of way is already city-owned out there.
Okay.
Purchased by BDOT many years ago. The city took it over from BDOT. There are small portions that we need, but there are, I mean, most of it is easements, either permanent or temporary easements. And then there is one or two parcels that we may have to acquire. Depends on the, depends on the hydraulics, if there's stormwater ponds that we have to buy more land for, so. Very, very little, though, is the answer there.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Newland? All right, thank you.
Yep.
So, Mr. Warner, have you all considered the possibility of, um, maybe proffering that first phase and, and then bringing that back before working with planning after that? In other words, you know, doing, you know, you said the first phase to go through the traffic circle, trying to think of ways that, that would be helpful. I, one of the things I think about when it comes to the whole idea of proffers and road improvements, and I, I know that they were, the state had some action on that a while ago. You know, I think that some of these intersections have been problematic before that land was even looked at by you all, and, and we have not done anything about it as a community. And I, I think that's, the community should be working at improving these areas, although we do have areas that are fine, that, that can support development. And, and then we actually have a lot of pushback as, as a planning unit to say, hey, don't put any more apartments in these areas that have the infrastructure. So it's kind of a difficult thing for a planning commissioner who's being told, oh, you can't have any apartments in this area that has all this infrastructure, and then we have this piece of land that could sit there for a while unused, but it's a great opportunity.
So, and it's a, and what you have asked, I think, is what we have answered. If, and this timeline might help a little bit from the questions that you were asking here. So on this screen, you'll see the intersection that Lee was just talking about. And if they were to be done in the spring of 2031, if we were to start in 2027, two years from now, building our homes, we see that we would be in that 2031 timeframe. So if you look the same year that we have the 2031 of being halfway done, their construction is done. That is why we made the proffer, to be halfway. So we think phase one would be at that point, that we then study, and our proffer says, we'll study the traffic again to see if that intersection needs to be approved. It's disingenuous to say that we would only count the 375, but we haven't sold the number of units. I would not be a professional if I turned something in like that. If we've only sold 10 units, then that's the amount of units that we have trips from. So it's not, the reason we said 375 in the proffer was because that's the point where we're halfway through, that the level of service goes from D to E. So that's why we made that proffer.
And of course, it's not my intent to, I'm just bringing attention to the fact that we have concerns with the wording of it. It's not to question Mr. Warner's integrity at all, but we have found that wording of proffers is very important. It's very specific, and when we have proffers that are a bit vague, a bit open-ended, that say, we'll study this later, or it's at, it's at engineering's discretion as to when we'll do this improvement, that puts us in a very, that puts us in a situation later to, to try to go and enforce it, so.
The proffer, like, answer that, in other words, to say, we read, look at it at such and such a day, once we've completed X number of units, is there a follow-up to that? And, and if X, then Y, or is that missing? Is that what you're talking about? In other words, if we say, in three, in five years, we're going to revisit this and look at the traffic situation then, uh, I guess the proffer right now is, we will look at it, all right, well, what is the result?
I think there are so many variables that it makes it hard to set any proffer language like this that's going to make it equitable.
So there's no action.
I can tell you, we spent hours trying to get the word in line. I promise you, we did.
Because if, if the, if the project, if the interchange, or not the interchange, but the 501-221 is delayed, then that's a factor. If something else comes in, that's a factor. If they're kind-scheduled, then, you know.
But I assure, but to rest you at ease a little bit here, our traffic study did not have the improvements down below. The $77 million project is not accounted for. So our traffic study doesn't even have that improvement happen down below us. And 375 is where the southbound intersection goes from a C, or I'm sorry, could go from a D to an E. E and F in the level of service world is when you really want to improve the intersection. So that's the point where we said, hey, we don't want to go any further. We wouldn't want to go any further for our own, uh, customers, for our own residents. We know we would probably have to fix something there. But at the same time, if this has been developed, why should we spend the 100% to get this fixed now if the EDA is selling this land?
I could have envisioned that in six years, if you're halfway through, and a lot of those are occupied, and you've got a traffic problem emerging, that your own residents are going to rise up against your claim.
100%, we like to.
Another 300 units in there.
We like to go to our own Christmas parties. So we want to be able to go to the clubhouse and have a good Christmas party. So we certainly wouldn't want to have to hear about that either. So we do fix things, we stay on top of our communities. Yep. Like I said, I love these meetings, you really get to go in-depth versus council meeting, just to put that on record.
I don't worry about that, it's, I, I do, I do, I don't think the language helps out of either side, um, because it is, it is sort of vague. The other situation is, you know, as you make a proffer like that, you assume that construction's going to happen when it's supposed to happen, people will fill up when they're supposed to do it.
Exactly.
I think you paint yourself into a corner, to be honest with you, because I think with the construction that's going on, it's going to be, there's going to be a slowdown. I mean, I've heard all this stuff, but I've never lived through a construction project that didn't, that didn't result in some traffic problems, so.
Well, that's why we didn't put a date on it.
Yeah, yeah.
We put a unit number.
And that's what I say, I, I just think it'd be, it'd be tough for you guys to sit down and say, I appreciate the halfway through part.
Yeah.
But I, I think you're going to have an unreal, uh, the pushback I would have from your side is, wait a minute, you haven't finished all the construction, this really isn't fair. And from the city's side, you know, there are, Rachel's already traced out a number of things that are, that are issues. So, um, you know, we're going back and forth on this, and, and I, I'm not smart enough to figure out how we solve, um, really the flow of, the flow of residents into the space in such a way that we have a traffic situation that's going to be okay, particularly given the fact that we're already unhappy with the traffic situation. So, um, so I guess, you know, for me, that, that's kind of where the crux of the issue is.
So we will certainly be improving the traffic situation in front of our development. That's something we know we have to do.
Right.
That's the left turn lanes that we have to build. So it's the issue that, do we have to improve the nearest intersection to us? We really do not have to improve that intersection at all until we get beyond 375. That's why we made the proffer. And then what we said is, we want to chip in to fix the intersection, just based on the number, the percentage that we have impacting that roundabout or signal. So that's why we made that proffer the way we did. We thought it was foolproof, but it hasn't been. Because, and I understand the plight, it is a city plight that, that they see that they haven't been asked to do, but I don't know that they've asked anyone to fix an intersection that's 900 feet away or 1.2 miles away. I'm not sure they've done that to anyone either. It's usually just in the frontage of their development if the intersection was there.
But I also think too, I also think too, if I'm, if I'm living in that, in that development, then those are the two, that's going to get, that's going to be the primary weight of my. weight of my trips, we're going to go that way, not going to go out the other, the other part, because the back part of Wiggington's worse than that side of it.
There's, there's a little bit of science that's going now in traffic studies where people are leaving 15 minutes earlier than normal to avoid the, the backup, and there's, there's studies are starting to reflect that, because you, you've experienced it probably with, before this intersection gets done, if you leave at the wrong time, you are backed up significantly, we see that too, but if you leave 15 minutes earlier, you make it, so it, it, it does have an impact, we do study that.
Let me ask this question, when you all looked at the, when you all looked at the, the, the project that we talked about, that, the, the way that we were going to address egress off of, on the ramp to, to 501, was going to be taken care of with that pair, correct? That was going to give you the, that was going to give you the traffic going out, so you would, we would take some of the pressure off of that turnoff from Wigginton Road onto 501, am I correct, or did I make that up?
I don't, I don't follow your question.
Well, you know, to stay with, to stay with my theory, if I'm leaving to, if I take a right out of this development, then I'm either going to go out to Old Forest Road, or I'm going to go back and hit the ramp onto 501. So, the, so from the, from the standpoint of, so to your comment earlier, I believe, was, this is going to take, this is going to help 221 more than, than, than the 501 and where that, where that exit ramp is, where that on-ramp is, off of Wigginton, is that, is that true, or is that?
I, I think the trip distribution from the study showed 25% are getting on to 501, correct me, do you remember that, and the rest are going down Wigginton?
I've got the trip generation rates, but I think what Lee was referring to was the, the movement that people turned left today.
Right.
They won't be able to turn left at Old Forest Road, they'll, they'll likely.
You'll have to, you'll have, if you're going to go to Old Forest Road, you're going to either.
Because if you were to use the new interchange, you'd have to do a right, then you do a left, then you do a left, and then you do a right, and so.
Very few people actually go to 501 and take a left on Old Forest Road, and I heard you all say earlier.
They're using Wigginton already.
They take Wigginton, it's, it's the right shortcut for them to do.
Sure.
And they still will, and that's why Lee brought it up to us when, during TRC, that's why we went down to study this intersection.
If your proffer for the Wigginton-Old Forest Road intersection.
Yes.
Will occur during the first phase.
Yes.
Which is the first 375.
That's correct.
Based on the prorata formula that you come up with.
That's right.
With other developers, but when, I mean, so that's what, that's a timeframe of, because you said, I mean, during, there's really no, like, it could be in the middle, it could be at the end.
For us, it's likely two years from now, as we go through the grading, and we go to get our land disturbance permit, we would probably have to do the transaction of, how do we, how do we come up with that scenario? It's based on the ADT, and the traffic study has those numbers, but we would have to have the city want to pitch in, let's say it's 75-25, or 85-15, whatever that number is, we would do the 15, the city would do the 85. It's really not that significant of a project, honestly, the, the turn lane isn't, however, to have us do the, all of it just seems, and it's 1.2 miles away, is a little bit different than what we normally would see or do, and I understand, so is asking them to pitch in for a project, it's not a normal thing, this is a little bit of an oddity, but we were asked to go down and look at that intersection because of the, the less, people aren't going to take those less down there.
Yeah, that's where they're going to be.
That's right.
Getting, getting onto Old Forest Road.
That's why we do think, we do share in the responsibility to do it, so it is a little bit different.
Well, we're seeing more and more of it, like, getting to the tipping point of where every time there's something, there's, you know, it's that last developer we talked about towards Ferry Road, like, who's going to pick up, you know?
Yes.
Is it going to be the next developer, and that's a real problem?
And, and for us, the problem that they have found for us, that we needed to study, just to let you know, the EDA was accepting bids in January, so it's at the forefront. You likely, within two months, could have someone here again with a layout that's going to do something the same way, there again, they would add to the same intersection issue that we think that we should share in, so whoever that could be, that's why we wanted to leave it open.
Yeah, I think that's why I asked about the 375, because I think that actually makes the argument tougher, because then if you get carte blanche on this space, then the right thing is to kind of follow it through to the, the next developer as well, you know, I think that's the easier, if it was a smaller, I think that's part of the thing, it'd be easier if it's a smaller development.
Yeah.
Even if there might have been future plans with it, to actually look at smaller bite-sized chunks.
Well, Kenzie picked up on that, that we, that intersection, the one down there, would be in our first phase, so we would do that in the beginning, it's the second intersection that we would do, the 375 proffer.
So, I appreciate a couple things to consider, yes, they're offering to share this with us, and whatever developer, whether it's that parcel you're referring to, or something else down the line, proffers do have to be voluntary, so we cannot lock in a future development to committing, to contributing to this proffer, so I don't really know how that would even work. The other thing is, you know, you heard 85-25, or 85-15, whatever the, the prorata is, I'm hearing that the city eats the lion's share, and you all pay for, the developer pays for a small portion based on the existing levels of service, but the existing levels of service, through the projections, while they may not be ideal, they're not failing, this development is what causes them to slip into the failing grade.
It, it doesn't fail, it's only a D, so it doesn't even go to E, just to be clear.
Sorry, degraded levels of service.
It degrades, but it, so it does in the future as well.
It does.
We do see that it can be fixed.
It goes worse when you.
Right, but it didn't fail, just, just to let you know.
If I may say so, you have to remember to keep this in context, the traffic study that was performed by their consultant only covers the levels of service impact, the turn lane warrants of their development, not economic development, not something that's going to come later. This is, everything in the study for the level of service, and the turn lane warrants, which they said they will do, and the Wigginton Road, all that is based on just their development.
But that's all they can really be responsible for.
Right, 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 I just want that to be clear, that their consultant did the traffic study, and the traffic study, which was done according to our manual specifications and our procedures, what is not very typical is for the developer to say, wait, you know, typically, they do their study, it shows what has happened, it shows how they're going to mitigate, and then they mitigate, and now they're saying, well, let's wait until, that's just not very typical when you work with others.
We have 65 acres, the EDA has 165 acres, so if they decide not to sell, and it becomes an industrial park, that also changes things, there are just too many variables that we're aware of, if you don't look around you, when you go to develop something, you're not smart, so we got to look around us to see what goes on. Likewise, if we had put a bid in, in one, the EDA property, we would combine our numbers, certainly if I was with another developer and I purchased that property, and Elevate Communities has developed 375 units, I have to put that in my mix, so it does, it will, the next step is someone else to do what they need to add, and then you get to have the dialogue of, whose prorata share is in this signal, or roundabout, or whatever it is.
If we do a, a development along Wigginton going forward, I think we're going to have to have this conversation as it stands now.
100% agree.
So, the EDA parcel is its own petition, if that moves forward, it is in an RFP process, so I'm not even positive what we can say about it right now, but if that moves forward, it will be, you know, brought forth on its own merits, we'll probably be having the same conversation about traffic with them. The other point that I wanted to make was that, you know, the 375, if they build 370 units and eat up the capacity, then the city is left with, I think, the short end of the stick in that scenario, they say, well, we're below the threshold, we don't need to do this study, and we're not going to, we're not going to improve the southbound left turn lane, or anything at the 501 intersection, I just, I, these, these open-ended proffers are, in my opinion, not, not good.
Can we, I know you said it was difficult, but can we not add some clarity to the proffers in a way that makes you comfortable?
So, while we do have concerns with the proffers, I also think, what I tried to convey in the report is, in general, is this location the right location for this number of units? I think it's a bit putting the cart before the horse to approve density like this without understanding the traffic impacts, but even if we do, I'm still not positive that it's the right place.
And I beg to differ, I mean, we as a developer beg to differ, we do this for a living, I can tell you that if you could go to any developer in the country and tell them that you could do 700 units, you have two intersections to improve with the city, but you're next to an interchange, you have a 20-inch water line out front, and you have the Bedford County, a, a different entity building you a sewer line that's giving you two laterals, it would be, everybody would jump in, this is a perfect spot for, we're sandwiched between the expressway and industrial land, that may develop into residential land. I don't know where else you could put condominium buildings and have a better spot for it in the city, there's not a lot of 65-acre parcels available to allow this. I'm trying to convince her, Rachel, before we get to, I'm trying to convince her before we get to city council.
And I'm just speaking with the commission, I don't want to get into a back and forth with, Mr. Warner, I think arguing that the land is vacant, therefore, this is a good idea, is not compelling to me, respectfully.
Maybe I won't convince her, but I'm going to try.
Respectfully.
And, and we have one in other cases where we haven't, and I've got beautiful communities that you could drive through, so we don't always win her over, but I do, we do build great communities.
Can I address, as a developer?
Sure, if you'd want to come up with Mr. Warner, that's fine, this is your, your partner.
Been a lot of discussion here on traffic, which is very important, and, but you guys are planning commission for the whole city, and we've become so hyper-focused on traffic here, that we're missing part of the bigger picture, and part of that picture is Lynchburg needs housing, Framatone is coming here with 500 jobs, I talked to John Fiese the other day, you know, Central Health is doing a $600 million expansion, they're going to have a lot of new jobs, he's also still very well-connected to BWX Technologies, they're hiring engineers, where are these people going to live? Are we going to force them to go out to Farmington? We're pretty full out there right now, there's a few coming up for resales, but the city needs housing, this place is sitting there next to this bypass, you couldn't find a better place you can get, you don't impact traffic on Leesville Road, you impact it right there at it, none of these cars, or very few, will be going out toward Bedford County, most of them will come out here, you know, Ms. DeSegal was here, she was looking for a place. Part of our understanding of how this housing is going to work is that we're going to pull people out of single-family homes in the Boonesboro area and live in here, people that are my age and older that want a single-level living and be able to move into maintenance-free, and that'll free up homes, so we're going to free up single-family homes within the city. The other thing we wanted to address at all is the city needs schoolchildren, I mean, the funding from state and federal monies is drying up because the number of students are going down. These probably won't produce a ton of students, but if we can free up those single-family homes, then we can get some younger families in there and put some students back into the school system. I just don't want us to be so focused on solvable traffic issues that we miss the bigger picture, and the bigger picture is Lynchburg needs homes, there's jobs coming here, why don't we build them here? A few years from now, this will be producing $2 million in real estate taxes per year, personal property, $800,000, retail sales, probably a million, so the, the city could be close to $4 million in income at build-out, now that's 10 years from now, but it will gradually build up over that course of time. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
We've heard a lot, asked a lot of questions, you know, so.
Except to get to the point where, see if there's a motion, someone's put a motion on the table?
Yeah, a motion that we approve, the proposal as submitted, and move forward.
A second.
Okay, any other conversation?
I, I did just want to make a point, I do think that we, here in Lynchburg, have very limited space left, and, and Boonesboro does have a lot of that space, and the infrastructure is not there, but it needs to be there, like, we, we need to, Lynchburg needs to change the roadways, they need to, to widen, and, because there's nowhere else to build, there's no, there's nowhere else to go, and, you know, and, and I, I do think that there's some great things about it with, you know, with having the water and the sewer already in place, with, you know, the proffers that are somewhat vague, they're still there, and hopefully, you just have to trust that, that the developers will follow through and do the right thing if it needs to happen, but I, I hate to be scared to say yes to something when it, it can be fixed, and, and the, the roadways need to be fixed, it, it needs to happen.
Well, the only thing I'd add to that, because that's exactly where my issue is, and Rachel, I hear you very clearly, by saying yes to this project, you, you, you have the city on the hook for a fairly significant traffic situation, you know, fix, I'm 100% with you, and I have struggled and vomited over that as much as I'm going to, because I think it comes exactly to what you said, Kenzie, at some point, the city council approves this, I think we have to highlight the fact that, you know, this is, this is, carries a, an investment on your part, but to Kenzie's point, it's an investment that's needed, because there is going to be development on Wigginton Road.
I mean, there's nowhere else to go.
There's nowhere else to go, and if we're going to fulfill the des, the density thing, then this is a, a perfect opportunity, you know, a perfect area except for the traffic, and it's, it's a struggle, but I think that's, you know, that's to Kenzie's point, we can't be afraid to move ahead, given what we've got to get done for Lynchburg.
Any other comments?
I would just say, I echo what's been said up here, and I've really struggled with this as we've gone through this process, I think the gentleman that last spoke really brought up a really good insight as it relates to how to think about some of these problems we're facing, I know it's not a simple solution, and I know it's very painful at the end of the day, but I do think the, the housing issue is legitimate, I do think at some point we're going to have to address the issues on Wigginton Road, whether it's now, or whether it's when, you know, EDA sells their property, whomever, and I just, I, I'm in support of moving this forward.
All right.
Well, let's go ahead and put on, to, to vote, all in favor of the petition, say aye?
Aye.
All right, I'll be the one in opposition, I do understand, I think it's a, a good project, I think, like I said, the city's been kicking the can down the curb, and that's why I would oppose this, simply because we haven't invested, so passes four to one, and good luck in planning commission, thank you all, and thank you for your time.
Any other items we need to discuss? We will be having a meeting in two weeks.
I believe you should, yes, yes, we will have a CUP.
Okay, great.
Yep, see you then.
All right, any, anybody opposed to leaving?
No.
All right, we're adjourned.